Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Public Bridge County Council of Commissioners meeting this October twenty-sixth, two thousand and twenty-two. We'll begin with the president's flag.
The President's flag is to the side of United States of America, and we are a nation under God.
Okay, I'd like to call it meeting to order or the roll call. Mr. Saracini, here.
Here.
Ms. Cummins.
Here.
Ms. McMenamin, here.
Ms. Saunders, here.
Ms. Gray, here. Ms. Willard, here. Ms. Malisekka?
Here.
Ms. Spitalwood, here. All calls done, Ms. Saracini. Thank you. Okay, we enter the public forum. I'm Arthur Weisfeld. That time of year.
That was an encouraging introduction. Uh, I'm Arthur Weisfeld.
As long as I ask for money, we're good.
Anything else?
Yeah, everything else you got.
Uh, I'm Arthur Weisfeld. I'm Director of Senior Community Services, which sponsors School Health Senior Center. Uh, and as Mr. River alluded, I am here for my annual brief presentation in regards to our funding request to send today electronically. So, but I guess I want to before I mention that, let me go backwards a little bit, just say a special thank you to the township for their support in its many ways over the years. Last year, I had a special surprise. Pat Chubb came over for a check presentation, and it was even more than we missed for. So, thank you for sharing, I think it was American Republican part of the... Just the doctor word. Thank you very much for that. And we are rebounding. The centers are fully operational. I would say we're about seventy percent of where we were pre-pandemic, and we're trending in the right direction. Uh, we've added a, uh, a ground and gummy program. Some people are still well elected, so to eat at group setting. So, we have this soup and sandwich option, and that's popular. And we're gonna keep it. It'll stay. We're well beyond, uh, this transition period. Uh, our in-home services are increasing. One was at ten percent more than we were a year earlier. I suppose that makes sense, that we have a sufficient need for that. Uh, so, uh, I, again, I thank the township for their support, and we have a longstanding partnership. We feel very fortunate that we're based here at Ridley.
We are. We're a fortunate one.
And I look forward to our continued partnership.
I, as always, really appreciate you and your staff and everything you do for all the seniors you do. Your team does amazing work for the seniors, not only at Ridley, but the surrounding areas. And I've done it for a long time. So, uh, we're very proud to have you, very proud to support you, and behind you a hundred percent.
Thank you very much.
I'll give you fifty percent of the money.
Fifty percent of the gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Ralph.
Thank you.
Chrissy Egan. I can't see you.
Very nice of you.
Very nice of you. Hello.
Chrissy Egan, seven fourteen, Lockmore Lane. I just wanna come tonight and say thank you for the good job that the guys did behind our fence, the township fence. We were here last month, and it was so overgrown and awful, and Jay Goppen and his team came, and it looks fabulous. I just wanna thank you all for all the concern and what you're happy.
I did, I did Patty, Marissa, and Jay, and Joe Ryan, and the gang there.
Yeah. I just wanna reiterate everything she said, because I was so impressed by how fast it happened, and how Patty came the same day, and Joe right here, and everybody, all the workers were wonderful. And I also want to thank the township. I know I'm getting a little ahead of myself, because they did all that good job. But when they, when we have snow, they do a good job, so, yeah. I just wanted to tell you big love. Sometimes you don't get the, the people that do the actual work don't really get the credit. I just wanted you to know that they were wonderful.
We will make sure they get the first.
Thank you. Okay, thanks.
Thank you. Come on in. Hour two for two. Nobody wants to complain?
It's not a pleasure.
Uh, anyone else in the public forum? Uh, seeing that, we'll continue on with the meeting. Manager's report, Mr. Ryan.
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, the commissioners and police department are hosting the annual trunk or treat this Saturday, October twenty-ninth, here in the Township Building. Gates open at one-thirty, and all cars must be in the lot in their position by two P M. Cars must remain parked until the event ends at four P M. Registration is required for this free event. More information or to register online, visit the township website at W W W dot Ridley T W P dot org. The reason people have to stay is just so we don't have cars trying to get in and out while we have little kids running around.
Joe, is registration, is it closed now?
No, it's still, you know, two spots.
Okay.
Less than a handful, but we have a couple. We have a block party request. We received a request to have a block party on Academy Avenue from Holmes Avenue to Hutchinson Terrace on Monday, October thirty-first, from four P M. to ten P M. All paperwork has been received, and a motion, a motion to approve would be in order.
I make a motion. Motion made. Second request on the motion. All those who favor standing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The next item is Robert Dukes was a patrol officer for the Township Police Department. He was in a traffic accident back in two thousand and nineteen and never returned to work. He separated his employment with the township on a disability, and a motion to accept this separation would be in order.
I'll second it.
Motion made. Second. Any question on the motion? All those who favor standing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
The last item I have, Mr. President, is that board approval was requested to ratify the purchase of a used two thousand and twenty Chevrolet Silverado pickup for the township at a cost of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred and eighty-eight dollars.
I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion made. Second. Any question on the motion? All those who favor standing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. That's all I have, Mr. President. Thank you. Recyclory report. Colonel Sack.
Trash collected in September was one thousand one hundred and eighty-six point thirty-six tons. Recycled in September was two hundred and two point thirty-one tons. We collected six TVs and monitors in September. For our television monitor recycling program, more information on our program is available on township website, W W W dot Ridley Township dot org. Thank you to everyone that came out to our community shredding day on October fifteenth. We collected over four point five tons of material amounting to over nine thousand three hundred pounds. Special thanks to Jay and me shredding and our public works personnel, John Conley and Bill Burke for all their help.
Thank you. They did do great, Joe. Thank you all. The charge report, anything, Mr. Spencer?
Nothing, Mr. President.
Thank you. So, I should have reported, Mr. Neal.
Thank you, Mr. President. The township received a request for an interim municipal restaurant liquor license transfer with respect to the crack barrel located on Stewart Avenue in the county. So, the next step in this procedure, we have a public hearing, which will be advertised. After that public hearing, the board of commissioners, then the next meeting within mode on whether to approve that application.
Okay, so we need an authorization to open a meeting. We would just...
We just have to advertise for hearings.
Okay, so we'll be advertising for hearing for liquor license transfer from somewhere in the county, but it'll be for the crack barrel. I'll get it. Thank you. Price goes very well there. Engineers report, Mr. Tandy.
Thank you, Mr. President. First off, we have certificates and recommend approval of filing certificates. Created Communication Services, two thousand and twenty-two police radio maintenance contract, two thousand seven hundred and four dollars and one cent. A U Service Incorporated, the two thousand and twenty-two storm and sanitary sewer contract, fourteen thousand eight hundred and thirty-five dollars and fifty cents. An Abidensio's contract incorporated, Hey Avenue Sanitary Sewer Project, change order number one and payment number two, amount of thirty-five thousand three hundred and forty-eight dollars and seventy-three cents. An Abidensio contractor sent Greenhouse Drive Sanitary Sewer Project, change order number one and payment number three, eighteen thousand five hundred and fifty-nine dollars and eleven cents. Traffic planning design for Midday Boulevard improvements for eight thousand eighty-six dollars and twenty-five cents. And the Green Lake Go Grant, twenty thousand two hundred and seventy dollars. And at Manasouge, it's for the Arlie Grant Construction Services, five hundred and seventy-one dollars and twenty-five cents.
I'll make a motion to, uh, accept the certificates as a grant.
Motion made. Second. Any question on the motion? All those who favor standing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We have two extra releases for consideration. We have a letter here from Dave Damon recommending release to lender builders for three oh nine Gorge Street, amount of thirteen thousand four hundred and twenty-six dollars and sixty cents, and for Bagey Builders at three oh one Sycamore Avenue, three thousand twenty dollars.
I'll second it.
Motion made. Second. Any question on the motion? All those who favor standing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Uh, Charles, one second. Keith, I'm getting a message that there's no volume on it on the TV, huh?
It's gotta be in the system. It's not in the camera. It's gotta be in the system in there. So, there's not much I can do about that.
Okay, Keith, you're right. Ray, all the way down.
I would love to.
Well, we apologize for the technical, the question of Facebook Live is okay, right?
It's just our, just the system.
I'll go to Facebook. Okay, I'm sorry. All right.
All right. The tagellation of bids, we opened a couple bids. First one was the two thousand and twenty-three diesel fuel. There was two bids received. A little bidder was Petroleum Traders. This would be the oil price index plus a differential of point zero seven zero two. It's recommended worth to Petroleum Traders.
I'll second it.
Motion made. Second. Any question on the motion? All those who favor standing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We also opened up the, the unleaded gasoline, or two bids for that, and a little bidder was Petroleum Traders at their amount of oil price index plus differential of point zero three six five.
Motion made. Second. Any question on the motion? All those who favor standing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried.
We opened bids for the Midday Boulevard and Sutton Avenue Drapes improvements. These were opened this morning. We received five bids ranging from forty-two thousand one hundred dollars to one hundred and eleven, two hundred and fifty dollars. Those bids are still under review by the Bureau Office and the Solicitor Club recommendation at next month's meeting. And finally, other Penn West project status, we had two projects remaining Armstrong Avenue, Wendy Avenue, Wendy Road, I'm sorry, Wendy Road. Uh, we are waiting to take care of a relocated gas main. That work has been completed. Uh, the contractors scheduled to come back to finish their work in the next thirty days. It's all that. Thank you.
Thank you. Highway Statuation Committee report, Ms. Gray.
Uh, yes. Two things tonight. Uh, in honor of the, uh, the observation of Election Day, there'll be no trash collected, uh, on Tuesday, November eighth. Trash will be collected on Friday, November eleventh, which is Veterans Day. Um, and also, the curbside leaf pickup program will begin next week, uh, October thirty-first, and it will start in wards two, one, two, and four. And the full schedule is available on the township's website at W W W dot Ridley T W P dot org. So, to go on there, you'll be able to find your, your ward. There's a ward map also available in case you don't know what ward you live in. So, that's it. That's all I have.
All right. All Orange Committee report, Mr. Dolly.
That's it tonight, Mr. President.
Recreation Committee report, Mr. McManaman.
Thank you, Mr. President. Mark your calendars for our annual Christmas tree lighting and the arrival of Santa to Ridley Township. The festivities will be held on Tuesday, December sixth, with the rain date of December seventh. You're on the grounds of the Ridley Township Municipal Building. Hot chocolate and snacks will be served at six-thirty, will be served at six-thirty. Santa will arrive with the help of the Ridley Township Fire Department at approximately seven P M. After lighting the tree, Santa will walk around the grounds and visit with everyone and pose for pictures. We hope everyone will stop by and join us in a fun evening to kick off the Christmas season. We will once again have the North Pole mailbox for your children to drop off the letters to Santa. Make sure you include a return address so Santa can send a return letter. Letters can be placed in the mailbox between November twenty-first and December fourteenth. We still have discounted tickets for purchase to the Adventure Aquarium. The tickets will be available until the second week of December here in Municipal Building, Monday through Friday, nine to four. Please make a nice gift to children of all ages. For more information on all our programs and the link to online registration, visit our website, W W W dot Ridley T W P dot org, or our recreation Facebook page.
I think. Public Safety Committee report, for the month of September, our police handled one thousand and sixteen calls for service that breaks down as follows. Plumland seventy-three, Folsom two hundred and fifty-nine, Holmes eighty-five, Melmoth Park seventy-five, Morton forty-seven, Ridley Park one hundred and forty-five, C Kane sixty-nine, Swarthmore fifty-one, and Woodland two hundred and twelve. Another busy month, definitely. Every time I read this breakdown, I think of Lois, and then, uh, I'm sure in fact she comments, saw Lois, you know, hopefully she's watching. I just wanna say, I hope you're doing well. I'm sure you're watching and critiquing as we, as we speak. Although, she's come to every meeting, and we miss her, and a true pleasure and a great person. So, Lois, take care of yourself. Um, on October sixth, a couple, a couple of bullets here. On October sixth, Officer Rowan and K nine partner Hans arrest assisted in Delaware County Narcotics Task Force with a warrant in the city of Chester. K nine Hans alerted to an area, alerted to an area under the sink where a large amount of marijuana was believed. Two arrests were made and two firearms were taken off the street. These two officers also had a recent write-up in the K nine carrier, and are up for an award for, for their tracking down and apprehension of an armed sub, subject back in July. This individual had assaulted two security guards and flooded tower E R before invading the area. On October fifth, Officer Judge was monitoring traffic on industrial highway when he observed a vehicle displaying counterfeit stickers. The operator initially refused the stop was immediately confrontational. When he eventually did, opening his window at only two inches, Officer Judge detected odor marijuana and inside, and learned that the vehicle was not registered and was uninsured. The defendant had locked himself inside the vehicle, and necessary force was utilized to arrest him. He was found to be in possession of crack cocaine and marijuana. On October eighth, Corporal Doyle and Officer Greeley would dispatch the Folsom Home Depot for a theft that just occurred. Officer Greeley was able to catch up with the suspect's vehicle in Holmes, and vehicle was, uh, conducted. The actor was identified being involved in a theft and placed under arrest. He was found in possession of meth and methamines. So, people keep trying to come in here and try to rob Home Depot. We catch them every month, it seems like. Keep up the good work. We'll make sure we hear the file.
Health and Code Committee report, Mr. Saracini.
Thank you, Mr. President. For the month of September, we had two hundred permits issued, fifteen contractors registered, sixty-one certificates of occupancy issued, forty rental inspections, and twenty health inspections. That's all.
Thank you. Dolly Committee, Mr. Saunders.
Uh, nothing to say, Mr. President.
Thank you. Library Research Center Committee report, Ms. Cummins.
Thank you, Mr. President. Children in grades, K to five can explore real fossils, examine tools, and learn about dinosaurs with the devil learning music and nature and science on November night. Other activities for children next month include two-step challenges, art class, karate, and storytime. Two hundred and fifty costumes were donated to the library for the Halloween costume swap event. There will be a hundred families stopped by to collect new costumes for the children. The remaining costumes were donated to the nonprofit Ratiety for Brain Compliments. The library is once again teaming up with local AmBets post one-one-eight to send treats to our troops overseas. The library will collect unopened bags of candy through November eighth. AmBets volunteers will then send the candy to fluid service members. Five thousand nine hundred and thirty-four people visited the library in September and checked out twelve thousand nine hundred and thirty-nine folks and other items. Program attendance was one thousand nine hundred and seventy-two. The library will be closed Friday, November eleventh, on our Veterans Day. For more information or to register for programs and activities, visit our website, W W W dot library dot org. Thank you.
Thank you. Finance Committee report, Ms. Marissa.
Thank you, Mr. President. All commissioners received the list of this month's bill. I'd like to make mention for the third of the subjects and controls.
I'll second that motion.
Motion made. Second. Any question on the motion? All those who favor standing by by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Okay, hold on, Mr. President. Anything?
Uh, nothing.
I'd just like to wish the president a safe and happy Halloween.
Before we go, could y'all run us straight to the Sixth Ward? Ms. Gray, do you think you have some news?
Yes, I do. Um, I wanna thank everybody tonight. Uh, I'm sure a lot of people out there already know the news, but, uh, my wife and I have purchased a new house. We're moving out of Ridley Township. Um, see, Tom, you're not the only one. But, uh, bittersweet for us, because, uh, we're both born and raised here. Um, other than a small period of time early in our marriage, we've lived here our whole lives. We've raised our kids, uh, here. Um, and we've made a lot of friends, and that part's gonna be tough. But we're looking forward to our, our future endeavors, and it's gonna be good. So, I just have a list of thank yous. Uh, first off, uh, I wanna thank Jim Pennable. Jim's no longer with us, but Jim was a, uh, huge factor in me taking this job initially. Uh, he saw fit in me, uh, the qualities that he brought to this job, and I hope I did him proud. I wanna thank Bob, Dave, and Jack. Uh, at the time, when I came on, those, those guys were the triumvirate leading Ridley Township politics, and they saw fit in me to be able to, uh, take this job and run with it. And I think, I hope, I hope I made them proud in doing that. Uh, I wanna thank the residents of Ridley Township, especially the residents of the Sixth Ward who kept putting up with me for all these years. Um, but, uh, I, I really enjoyed, uh, helping, helping the residents and helping people get through situations that they needed help with. Never forget the time Rick and I were out shelving or raking some weeds and doing that stuff. But, uh, they're the kind of things that made this job fun. So, um, I'd like to thank the local, uh, community organizations, the Civic Association, the Little League, uh, Fire Company, Scouts. Um, did a lot of, did a lot of things over the years with those groups, and they made it an absolute pleasure to do this job. Um, I'd like to thank all the township employees, uh, that work upstairs in the administration. I'd like to thank, uh, the police department. You guys were true gentlemen and ladies to work with, and I appreciate that over the years. Uh, the trash and the highway guys, um, they were always responsive to anything, and I know the rest of the board will back me up on that. They're, they're always there, and they're there at a moment's notice to help us out when we need that help. Uh, because residents have a bad day. It happened to me. It happened to me like three weeks ago. Uh, had, had, in the storm, had a big branch fell across the street, and, uh, the township guys came out and cleared the street within about two hours. It was perfect. It wasn't, wasn't a job I could have done myself. Uh, but the police came out, and the highway guys came out and they cleared it. It was great. So, um, and I like to see that they do that for everybody. So, they're, they're awesome. Um, she'll kill me for this, but a special thanks to Patty. Uh, she's, uh, she's the cog that keeps the whole thing going. So, no offense to her.
I agree. I agree. Church on you every day.
I'd like to thank, uh, Bill, uh, Pete, uh, who was a solicitor before Bill. Uh, Pete's no longer with us, but, uh, these guys did a great job. They keep you on track. They make sure that you're doing it the right way. So, that's very important. Uh, Chuck, thank you, and your dad. Uh, he and I had a, uh, a fun relationship, I believe. I believe he appreciated the fact that I gave him as much grief as he gave me, and, uh, I know I continue to do it with you too. So, um, but I appreciate all your help over the years. Special thanks to, uh, to all the commissioners that I've worked with over the years. Uh, you guys have made this job fun. Um, it, it's not always a fun job, but, uh, this group works together, and every group I've worked with over the years has worked great together. Obviously, Chris, you've been there the whole time, and thank you also for keeping, keeping money straight, because I was the finance guy for a long time, and it's, uh, not my cup of tea, so you kept it going. So, thank you. Um, also, special thanks to the poll workers that, that worked for me, that made, uh, made my life a little bit easier as Sixth Ward Commissioner. Uh, as I like to say, they kept the complaint department rolling, and they kept everybody, uh... Uh, as I like to say, they kept the complaint department rolling and they kept everybody, uh, helped, helped me to keep everybody happy. Uh, they made me look good, which isn't always the easiest thing to do. And lastly, uh, my family's in the back. Uh, they've been a huge support over the years. As everybody knows, this job's not always easy, but, um, they definitely were there to have my back for anything. All three of my kids are here tonight, all three of my grandkids, all, all, uh, all of my in-laws, uh, everybody's here, so, um, it means a lot to me to see friends and family back there. Basically, that's what Ridley's all about, so, uh, I wish all you guys the best of luck doing work. Yeah, my wife did.
Mike, uh, I'll go first, I guess, but, uh, I know one thing, uh, Jim Panama was smiling down and there is no doubt in my mind that you made Jim Panama proud. Uh, did you fill it? There were big shoes to fill at the time. Uh, Jim Panama did a lot. They lead them all over and, uh, you felt it seemed like seamlessly. Maybe because you made your weight, that's why I should use. But, uh, you, you truly did. I'm, I'm sure you'd be very proud. And as far as, you know, I'm concerned and Jack and Dave and wherever we made the race, we stand and, and, you know, still is, you know. And, uh, I can say that Mike, you, Mike worked very hard being a commissioner and he's right, it's not easy. It's not easy when you have a lot of residents and things happen and you have to see them and some are broken, some aren't. So you gotta learn to deal with them and Mike always did that well. And in the course of that, you, you know, you're always a good friend. More than, more than a commissioner, you've always been a good friend to me personally. And I'm sure there were a lot, a lot of people, but it's, uh, I really, when Mike told me he was moving, it might come and kick me in the stomach. I, I just didn't, you know, didn't see that coming, but, um, it was a pleasure working with you. We're always, I know you're not going far, but, uh, I just want to, you know, wish you a lot of happiness going forward and, and hopefully we'll see you around.
Ah, you're welcome.
All right. Excellent. You're welcome.
Thank you. We'll miss you, Mike. Deb, enjoy your new house. Uh, it's, it's been a pleasure and you showed me a lot when I first got home, so thank you.
Yeah.
Bless you, Deb. More memories for you guys. Enjoy a lot of our personal, all the things she given.
Mike, I'm sure I'll see you.
I'm sure we will see each other again. Mike, when I came aboard a little while ago, you were one of the first persons to come up to me and say, uh, you know, anything you need, you know, talk to me and I really appreciate that. And that is why I always let you win in golf. Now, since you're gone, I will kick your butt just so I can.
I'm looking forward to that.
Dad, good luck, everybody, family, good luck. Michael mission.
Works you remember for. It's dumb though. Mike, I'll just wish you all the luck here in your life and your family. It's been a pleasure working with you. We've known each other for a long time. My kids played soccer together and all that, but, uh, I mean, it's. Yeah, Mike, congratulations and, uh, good luck to you and Deb. It's going to be different with you not being here, but you're always there without a question and, you know, you've got a lot of things done in your area, so, uh, we're going to miss you. Okay, good luck.
Appreciate you. How many years has it been, Mike? Thirteen official. Thirteen official. It's been wonderful seeing your beautiful family grow. I've met them all and I just want to say, Amy, you're still my favorite. Best of luck.
Her name's Elaine.
And I just want to wish you good luck, Mike. Township, Ridley Township was very lucky to have you back to, um, have you here and be part of the community, your family. I've done a lot of coaching. It's people like that that make the community what it is today. It makes it strong. So we'll miss you, you're a lot, and like you said, you're not far too far and, uh,
I'll still be around.
Come back to visit us as soon as we do.
Congratulations again, Mike and Deb, and enjoy your new maintenance three living room. Stop with snow anymore.
Yeah, maintenance is what it's all about, huh?
Thank you for being a great mom for all of us department.
Yeah.
Mike, thank you so much. Debbie, thank you for laying the time that it takes. Mike gave me a special call saying I can still reach out to him, so as I did in the past, you know, I can, I thank you for the priceless advice he gave to me. Thank you so much. Thank you. Okay, Mike, any parting shots or?
I'm going to miss everybody. I mean, it's, uh, it's a cliche, but we're one big happy family and we work well together. And it's, uh, I wish you member, I, there's a lot of qualified people in my neighborhood and whoever, whoever steps up to take that job, I wish, this job, I wish them, I wish them well in their endeavors, but they're in good hands. Thank you.
Okay, on that note, the, any parties interested in filling the unexpired term of sixth ward commissioner, Mike McCray, there is the email contact at ridley township, ridley T W P dot org or drop off a letter of intent with a resume to the office, township manager, Ridley Township Municipal Building, 100 East McDay Boulevard, Folsom PA, during normal working hours excluding holidays on or before Friday, November 4th at 4:00 P.M. So we have up to 30, first vice co said we have up to 30 days. Our November meeting is, is early because of time steering, so we'll be, uh, you know, looking to do the interviews actually prior to. So anybody interested, um, bye. That's it. Mike, good luck.
Yes, thanks, thanks all.